Recording now.
Great, thanks, Craig. So, good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Burein and I serve as Maryland Insurance Commissioner. And on behalf of the Maryland Insurance Administration, I am pleased to welcome you this morning, or this afternoon, to our second virtual public hearing on the Mental Health Parity Reporting Regulations that the MIA will be adopting by December 31st, 2021. With me today from the MIA are Erica Bailey, our Associate Commissioner for Compliance and Enforcement, David Cooney, our Associate Commissioner for Life and Health, Lisa Hall, Deputy Principal Counsel, Mary Quay, Chief of Life and Health Complaints, Teresa Morphy, Chief Market Conduct Examiner for Life and Health, Lisa Larson, Director of Hearings and Regulations, Michael Patti, Director of Government Relations, and Craig I, who is our Director of Communications. As most of those present today know, during the 2020 Legislative Session, the MIA worked very closely with insurance carriers, members of the General Assembly, and advocates regarding the oversight and enforcement of the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act enacted by Congress in 2008. The result of those communications and conversations was the enactment of House Bill 455, which amended Section 15144 of the insurance article to require carriers to submit reports to the Commissioner to demonstrate their compliance with the Parity Act. The law also requires the Commissioner, in consultation with interested stakeholders, to adopt regulations to implement the law, including regulations that ensure that the reports filed are based on uniform definitions and methodologies. The MIA is also required to develop a reporting form, and the uncodified language of the law provides that that form is the NAIC's form, and I'll quote, it says, "shall be the National Association of Insurance Commissioners' data collection tool for mental health parity analysis, non-quantitative treatment limitations, and any amendments by the Commissioner to the tool necessary to incorporate the requirements of the newly enacted statute." Now, during our first hearing on November 23rd, 2020, we heard from stakeholders and experts concerning areas of non-compliance by carriers regarding parity and what reporting ought to look like. We specifically heard from participants at the hearing regarding which non-quantitative treatment limitations, which referred to as NQTLs, should be the subject of reporting. There are those that believe that the NQTLs listed on the NAIC Collection Tool, that the list is under-inclusive and want all NQTLs to be reported on. There are those that believe that the Collection Tool is over-inclusive and that it includes NQTLs that really don't provide much meaningful insight into parity. And there are those that find it both under and over-inclusive for purposes of really identifying meaningful parity, not meaningful insight into parity, and would create a new streamlined set of NQTLs. Following the hearing, as we as an MIA team got together, the first thing we considered, as we were looking at these varying views, was really the bill itself and the testimony provided at the hearings for House Bill 455 and its companion in the Senate, Senate Bill 334 during the 2020 legislation, as well as the very lengthy discussions of the smaller legislative working groups that debated the merits of these bills. We also considered the uncodified language of House Bill 455 as adopted, which I just read, and which specifically provides that the standard form that the Commissioner is required to develop shall be that NAIC form, and then any amendments to the tool necessary to incorporate the requirements of the statute. The NAIC Data Collection Tool lists 13 areas of NQTLs to satisfy the reporting requirements, and the MIA team felt that it was very clear from the bill discussions during the 2020 session that the legislature expected the MIA to collect data and conduct analysis on each NQTL included in the NAIC tool. Furthermore, we felt that reducing the number of NQTLs on the standard form below the 13 areas listed on the tool was not, quote, "necessary" to incorporate the requirements of the statute. We then considered whether the standard form needed to expand the list of NQTLs to ensure sufficient data would be collected to satisfy the comprehensive reporting requirements under 15144(c). And in that regard, we considered best practices that have been suggested by other states and federal regulators, industry groups, and nonprofit research firms. The consistent recommendation from all of these sources was that in order to perform a meaningful analysis with limited resources, it is absolutely critical to focus regulatory efforts on a limited number of NQTLs that affect access the most. So with that background, the MIA carefully considered comments and expert presentations shared during the November 23rd, 2020 public meeting, particularly those reflecting disparities in payment levels between medical and behavioral health providers. The focus on payment levels at the public meeting was not surprising because in prior discussions with stakeholders and regulators, reimbursement rates consistently identified as one of the most impactful NQTLs. We also considered the recently published FAQs from the Department of Labor, Health and Human Services, and the Treasury on April 2nd, 2021, in which these departments identified four NQTLs for its near-term enforcement efforts, including out-of-network reimbursement rates and other measures as well. So based on that research and analysis, the MIA proposes adding reimbursement rates as an additional area for the NQTL report. And today's meeting really is to obtain input on that recommendation. Now, at this juncture, we have not proposed adding any other NQTLs to the report, but we will take feedback on that today, particularly with regard to the impact of adding any of the other NQTLs specifically identified by the tri agencies in their report, their recommendations, or their near-term enforcement efforts that were issued in early April. So with that background and that context, I'll ask Craig to take it back over to review some of the technical and housekeeping matters regarding today's hearing.
Thank you. So first, this virtual hearing is being recorded. The video and sound recording will be made available on the MIA's website within the next few days. A second, only those individuals who received a participant invitation and who have access to this meeting through that link can be seen or heard. Links were sent to anyone who requested to speak in advance. If you fall into that category but have not been able to log in as a panelist, please let us know via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Third, even if you did not sign up to speak, if you wish to be heard, please let us know via the chat function. When we have heard from all of our scheduled speakers, as time permits, we will hear from those who indicate that they want to be heard. As a reminder to everyone, if you are participating, please mute yourself unless you are speaking. That improves our sound quality. Commissioner?
Okay, thank you, Craig, so much. We do have a number of panelists today, and I am very thankful for and appreciate if everybody who has signed up to speak, and I will only echo Craig's comments that I really, to the extent we have time, and I think we will, I very much want to hear from everybody who has something to say, so don't be shy about putting your hand up at the end of our scheduled speakers if you have something that you want to add. So first today, first up is Dr. Henry Harbin, who is an advisor to the Bowman Family Foundation and former CEO of Magellan Health. So, Dr. Harbin, thank you very much for being with us this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner Burein, and appreciate the opportunity to present again. And also with me is Beth Ann Middlebrook, a parody expert lawyer. Both of us are working with the Bowman Family Foundation, a nonprofit foundation that has really dedicated itself to data collection, actually, and documenting, you know, what's going well, what's not going well, and parity implementation. We both work with a lot of other groups, but we're here specifically representing some of that work. So we-
And I apologize for not introducing Beth. I had you as a second speaker, but I'm glad that the two of you will be going together, playing off of each other, so thank you, Beth, as well.
Very good, thank you.
So, yes, both of us, Beth Ann and I, have been, you know, working, providing input really to the Department of Labor and the tri federal agencies for a decade on how to better audit and, you know, enforce the parity, particularly the NQTLs, the non-quantitative treatment limitations. And we've worked with lots of employers and health plans and providers as well, so we appreciate the opportunity to come again. Part of what we both wanted to do was to sort of support, Commissioner, the adding of the reimbursement as one of the NQTLs, and a very important one, and potentially others, as you said. And we had laid out a lot of detailed kind of suggestions and ideas, and most of those based on the regulatory guidance given by the Department of Labor over the last decade. It's hard to believe how long ago this law passed, and we're still almost at... Well, on NQTLs, we're way behind the eight ball, but quantitative limits and foundational requirements, I think it's been really good at compliance, very good, with a few exceptions, and so we know it can be done. And I guess we'd like to see the loop closed on, and in better enforcement on the NQTL. So, but a lot's happened since last November. As Commissioner Burein mentioned, the Consolidated Budget Act or Consolidated Appropriation Act passed at the end of December 2020 added several additional requirements to the parity law. The two of those, I think, were most important. It put into statute many of the regulatory guidance that's been given about how to conduct an NQTL compliance analysis. And some of that had been in sub-regulatory guidance, some had been in regulations, but it put in law what had to be done, and we'll go talk a little bit about that. Then the departments put out in April 2nd, just a few weeks ago, an FAQ summarizing those statutory changes, as well as a lot more detail on what kinds of document and comparative analyses need to be done. By the way, I wasn't going to go into this, but just so people understand it, and the statutory changes at the end of December gave additional requirements and authority to the Department of Labor for monitoring and auditing these analyses. It required that they have to do 20 audits a year, and they may do a lot more, but at a minimum. And they gave them new authority, which, as far as I know, Commissioner Burein, you probably know better than I, they've not had that authority before, but it basically says if they ask any self-insured employer or any health issuer, like a health plan, for these NQTL analyses, they have to provide them as of mid-February of this year for all NQTLs, and they give a lot of detail about what they are. If, in fact, what the employer or health plan, health insurer, provides them is inadequate, they're supposed to give them specific feedback on how they need to be corrected. And if they are not corrected, they are to publicly identify that entity and as non-compliant with the Parity Act, and send that information to all of their subscribers and beneficiaries, which is really, I think, a pretty heavy stick instead of a carrot, which has not been done before. So, I know from talking to a lot of employers and health plans over the last several months, this has really got their attention, and a lot of people are working on this and are trying to do these analyses. So, but a couple of, I would like to highlight a couple of important things that were put into the February 2nd, I mean, the April 2nd Department of Labor issuance, the FAQs. So, I'm going to read a couple of these sentences, so bear with me. I think they said it better than I can summarize it, so I'll just... But it says that plans and issuers should include comparative analyses that are sufficiently specific, detailed, and reasoned to demonstrate whether the processes and standards are applied comparably and applied no more stringently compared to medical. The other, which lays out, I think, what you all are considering, the MIA, is like, well, how detailed do you have to be in your guidance and requirements and templates? This is a pretty clear language. And the second thing, a second key area here, is that the FAQ issued in April made it clear that all of the sub-regulatory guidance and regulatory guidance given over the last decade is to be used as a guide. And here is, he says, we're talking specifically about the self-compliance tool issued and updated in 2020, it's been out there for almost four years already. That is the most detailed guidance the Department of Labor has ever given about what is a proper analysis, when should you quantify factors, how to do detailed analyses and comparative analysis, and what's compliant and not compliant. Here's the sentence there, it said, "The Appropriations Act," this is in the April FAQ, "The Appropriations Act expressly requires that plans and issuers conduct and document comparative analyses of the design and application of NQTLs. Therefore, this process is no longer a best practice, it's required." And I'll add, "by law." So, this, in my experience of having, you know, looked at a lot of what plans have provided as an appropriate comparative analysis or employers over the last several years, and talked to a lot of plans about this, there's not been great compliance with offering these detailed analyses. Often, the factors that they're deciding as to why to apply in detail are not defined, or even if they are defined, no analysis is provided. So, I think clearly many stakeholders went to and got a bipartisan bill, I might add, the one at the end of December, and got this kind of language added because of the lack of compliance in this particular area. So, a couple of other things that's important is who can trigger a request for these comparative analyses? So it's not just a regulator, it's, if I can find where I've got this, it could be, it can be required by participants, beneficiaries, and erolies upon request, or a provider acting as an authorized representative can request these documents, and it would be considered non-compliant not to provide them. So I know that a number of stakeholders are kind of educating providers to ask for, if they feel there's been a parity violation, ask for these comparative analyses on specific NQTLs. And if they don't provide them, their plan is to take this straight to the Department of Labor and ask them to do an audit. So, the other kind of important, I thought, really important document, which, Commissioner Burein, you mentioned, is what are they focusing on? What is the federal level focusing on? And it's really four areas. It's particularly pre-certification concurrent review of inpatient outpatient. Those are the most common medical management or NQTLs that plans apply. And there's nothing wrong with applying, but it's highlighting that the comparability analysis needs to be done in detail. The two, though, that are even more important for this discussion is, I'll read it, "Standards for Provider Admission to Participate in a Network Including Reimbursement Rates." So that means the Department of Labor and the other federal agents are really focusing on reimbursement rates in-network, and what impact do they have on admissions to the network? And the fourth area is out-of-network reimbursement rates, plans, methods for determining usual customary and regional charges, reasonable charges. So, the highlight of this is, I believe that, you know, separate from what the state does, right? The federal government is upping the enforcement activity a lot, and the level of detail and what's going to be required for either whether it's an assessment of one NQTL or multiple NQTLs has been really escalated. I think Beth Ann is going to talk some about the, you know, the guidance from the self-compliance tool. She and I have done a lot of work with reimbursement rates and other quantitative methods to calculate whether or not there's been comparable application of... So anyway, I'll turn it over, Beth Ann, to you to talk a little bit more about what are these kinds of quantitative measures that can be done? I think the most important thing I would say on this is that if you are asking for something specific, whether it's denial rate disparities or reimbursement or out-of-network use, asking a plan a general question, like, are you in compliance with this? Or do you have a comparison? Are you paying the same, whatever? Asking that without a specific template, I think, will yield probably nothing. And my guess is, what you will get, they will have to create their own methodology and template. And having seen this happen, when employers have asked for this information, you might go back five times to try to understand what each plan did. And I think a time saver and efficiency would be to lay out a specific methodology and template, so everybody knows exactly how to do it, and you don't have to go back and forth, and you can see the results, and they can see the results. But let me ask, Beth Ann, why don't you say all the things I forgot to say?
Thank you, Henry, and thank you, Commissioner Burein. It's a pleasure to be here once again, and we certainly applaud Maryland for adding reimbursement rates as one of the NQTLs that need to be examined and for which a comparability analysis needs to be conducted. It's an extremely impactful NQTL, so we are very glad to see that. And it is certainly, as you've said, in keeping with the federal guidance that has arisen, the federal statutory amendment and the regulations on that statutory amendment that have arisen since the November 23rd hearing. And specifically, with respect to reimbursement rates, you know, and in noting what Henry had quoted about the self-compliance tool and the necessity for detailed analysis, the April 2nd guidance specifically does say that that issuers should carefully apply the robust guidance of the self-compliance tool, which is now a required process. So in so doing, we look back at that self-compliance tool, and what was added in the 2020 tool that hadn't been there previously was examples of warning signs for reimbursement rates specifically. And so we're not talking about warning signs of parity non-compliance strictly within an operational compliance analysis. We're talking about across the board, no matter where we are or what we're doing in looking at NQTLs. When it comes to reimbursement rates, there are warning signs that are indicative of parity non-compliance. And one is inequitable reimbursement rates established via a comparison to Medicare. The other is lesser reimbursements for mental health SUD physicians for the same evaluation and E&amp;M Evaluation and Management Codes. And we'd like to now, if it's possible, to pull up templates that we have provided, if that's possible, to put those on the screen. There are two tables that are ready to launch.
Sure, I think Craig has them.
Yes, we do. Victoria, it's the Word document.
Perfect. If Victoria could scroll up to the top of this Word document, fantastic. So what we're looking at are a couple of tables. Now, these tables were pulled out, and they were formerly part of, and still are part of, Model Data and Definitions Methodology Form, which sets forth specific detailed definitions and instructions for conducting this reimbursement rate comparability analysis. These particular tables are for in-network office visit reimbursement rates. They can be used for out-of-network as well. And this type of a template or a format can also be used on an inpatient basis if you're comparing comparable revenue codes for per diems as a benchmark of Medicare. We're looking into doing some testing on that as well. These particular tables reflect the methodology that was used in the Milliman 2017 and 2019 disparity reports. They're also used by the state of Washington in its Second Market Scan Audit of NQTL parity compliance. And similar tables have also been incorporated into the proposed regulations for NQTL compliance by the state of Texas in its proposed regs. So if you look at these table templates, and by the way, this has also been used by a combination of about 18 large health insurance issuers, TPAs, and employers in conducting their analysis, whether it be specifically of parity or whether it be on a broader range of network access and adequacy. So if you look at this table and you scroll down a little bit, you've got some definitions, you've got instructions, then you've got weighted average allowed amounts that to be inserted here, and then we also have an Excel version of these tables with the formula embedded, and the formula is protected, so it can't be changed. So you ensure yourselves of uniform methodology, uniform data reporting that has been vetted, it's operationally feasible, and it provides consistent, reliable, comparable reimbursement rate data. And so you have, what comes out of the actual rates is, and this is, this is straight E&amp;M codes, physician to physician on the med search and behavioral health side, and you've got percentages here. And then if you, and if you get a higher in-network reimbursement on the medical side, then on the behavioral health side for the identical E&amp;M code, then the question is, why is there that disparity? So let's move on, and what does that indicate in terms of parity? The second table that we've also provided, again, you've got your definitions, instructions for conducting weighted average allowed amounts. This is indexed to the National Medicare Fee Schedule. And if we could continue scrolling down, so here we're using comparable CPT codes, not identical, because we're now doing medical doctors on the med side versus non-medical doctor clinicians on the behavioral health side. So therefore, it's indexed to Medicare. This table is very similar to Appendix 2 of the self-compliance tool. And we actually plug in the Medicare Fee Schedule so that the insurance issuer only has to fill in their weighted average allowed amount, and it populates in the Excel version that we have submitted, that'll be posted to the website, the actual percentage. And if there's a difference, why is there a disparity? And if you could continue to scroll, we do some more codes, more commonly used, CPT codes for commonly used office visits. Now, other CPT codes can be added to this, as well as what the feds have already done, is including specific type of specialists for this analysis. And then there is also a footnote at the bottom to explain exactly how the Medicare rates that were plugged in, how they were gotten, and if the insurer wanted to validate the accuracy of those, how they could do that. So we offer those up as a really wonderful tool by which to obtain uniform, consistent, reliable data by using a uniform methodology. And thank you so much. So let me... What I also wanted to talk about was, you know, in addition to reimbursement rates, the self-compliance tool, which is now a required process, has stated, and this is important in terms of the whole realm of quantitative information, has stated that every factor must be defined. And why this is important is, the April 2nd guidance does state, you know, when attempting to comply with the NQTL comparability analyses, if issuers and employer plans look closely and carefully follow the self-compliance tool guidelines, they will be, they can assure themselves that they will come very close to what the federal agencies have in mind, and what the states, of course, will also be attempting to enforce in their oversight. And what it states with respect, in terms of other quantitative analyses, is that reference to factors and evidentiary standards that were applied in a quantitative manner without the precise definitions, data, and information necessary to assess their development and application, and without the required clear and detailed comparative analysis are not going to cut the muster. Those types of things are things that issuers and plans must avoid. And so the compliance tool provides specific examples of what constitutes compliance. So if you've got quantitative factors, for example, that are defined, rather, factors that are defined, rather, that are inherently reliant on quantitative measures, then you must define them by virtue of those quantitative measures and conduct the comparability and stringency analysis accordingly. So if you've got excessive utilization as a factor, you've got to define it. Is it two standard deviations? What is it? If you've got medical cost escalation, what does that mean? You've got to define it quantitatively. Is it 10% or more? Is it this lack of adherence to quality standards? What does that mean quantitatively? Does it more than 30% of the time, et cetera, et cetera? And those specific examples are provided so robustly in the self-compliance tool. We really encourage, based upon the April 2 guidance, that issuers follow that closely.
You know, Beth Ann, that's a really important point. One thing I forgot to say that that sentence you read out, that language was in the April 2 FAQ as well.
Correct.
Where they have a list of what is not going to be an adequate comparative analysis. And the reason I think that the Department of Labor and other agencies where it made this is what they have gotten historically, despite some specific guidance, is more summaries, just like, well, we looked at both sides of the fence. We looked at some sources and they're comparable trust us. So basically what they're saying here, and I think it supports Commissioner Burein, you all, you know, providing more detailed templates or, you know, how to do it. Because what they're saying is, I'll quote it, it's not only in the self-compliance tool, but in their April 2 guidance was, without the precise definitions, data and information necessary to assess their development or application, it will be insufficient.
What I'm hearing the two of you say are really two things. One, that if the MIA wanted to, the self-compliance tool would be a good place maybe to start and maybe to finish in terms of what is the methodology? What is the templating to borrow that? And that, secondly, that should be something that should be easy for carriers to accept because the federal mandate is now there to use it. So if you already have to use it and be prepared to use it and be, you know, prepared to provide this information to the feds using those standards, having that now be the state standard should not be overly additive to what the feds are requiring. Am I hearing those things correctly?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're also suggesting that, you know, data templates such as Appendix 2 to the self-compliance tool is a very simplified version of the reimbursement rates. We've sort of done it as doc-to-doc for E and M codes to address the two specific warning signs. And then the Medicare index. We've done it both ways. And also in the templates we've provided, when that template, it's very, very helpful. That template isn't in Excel form with hard formulas that cannot be changed embedded in that template, then the assurance of consistent, reliable data is increased. The margin for error is almost eliminated.
But I think what I would add, Commissioner Burein, is that yes, the self-compliance tool provides a lot of detail in this additional FAQ in April. But the guidelines given in self-compliance doesn't go to the same level of detail that what we just presented, this in four areas. It's the reimbursement, out-of-network, network participation, and denial rate disparities. That takes, the self-compliance tool lays it out pretty specifically. You need this kind of information, but it doesn't give, at least as yet, right? I think they are looking at, as number of states are looking at, NAIC is looking at, you know, how do we make this even simpler? And I would hope over time we'd get some model data reporting that everybody could use. It doesn't mean you couldn't ask for more or some additional things, or plans might want to provide additional things. But at least we'd get some consistent answers. And I think less work, because as Beth Ann said, the employers have used this as a, I wish 17 different health insurers have provided these kinds of data quantitatively to their customers. It's not public. It's, you know, it's there looking at it, not from a compliance point of view, but from a network adequacy point of view. Even though it's very interesting what's happening right now because of the target, as you all know, of the Department of Labor, our self-insured employers and health issuers. So they are going to the employers wanting these comparative analyses. And I can tell you, because we work with a lot of employers, they're very concerned about this because oftentimes they don't know what the reimbursement rates are based on. They don't know what the medical criteria. They don't know all the details, nor should they. But they're going to be asked to provide it. And so they're going to be, they are turning to their, you know, their TPA partners and saying, you know, where is this information? So again, I think it points to that the guidance in the self-compliance tool in April is very clear. You better be pretty detailed and specific. So are you going to be going back to the drawing board? In worst case, you'll be outed as not compliant, so.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, I was just going to say, I appreciate that. And I wanted to give you a chance to finish up. And then I was going to ask if there was any member of my staff that had any questions. But I don't know, Beth Ann, it sounds like you were about to say something, so let me let you.
I was just going to point out that a similar template is available in the MDDM, but it's also available as a separate standalone section for denial rates. And that's a very, very important operational data measure with respect to the preauthorization and concurrent reviews.
And I will say, just final point, the reimbursement thing is important. And the Milliman report that was published in 2019 covered five years. And we presented that in the meeting in November. But just one data point. Over that five years, 2013 to 2017, the average rates for behavioral providers never got above Medicare allowances. This is for commercial insurers. Whereas commercial insurers would increase the rates above Medicare allowances 20 to 60%, depending upon the state. So, you know, you ask any commercial insurer, do you pay your medical, your primary care docs, your medical specialties, Medicare levels? Pretty rare. Yet, in the mental health side, five years' worth never got above that. This is an average now of hundreds of insurers. Some subuses never even got to the Medicare level. It was always below for five years. And I continue to hear from providers in Maryland and elsewhere that they're being paid for some of the same kind of codes. They're being paid less than Medicare, less than Medicaid. One of the reasons, Commissioner Burein, I don't know how many complaints you all get, but a lot of providers over the years have been very worried about retaliation, if they even make an appeal. I don't know what you all's policies or procedures for that. But I think if you're going to know whether there's a problem or not, we really need to hear from providers. And a lot of them are very worried. I don't know what you, maybe you could help us. You all have some kind of procedure, how you intervene if you hear about that. But anyway, that was my final comment.
Well, thank you for that. And that's one of the reasons why we, you know, have been, you know, really wanting to hear particularly from Med Guy because they can be a voice for providers. So let me just ask if anybody from the MIA has any questions for Dr. Farben or for Ms. Middlebrook? Okay, well, with that, thank you very, very much for your presentation and for your good work. I really appreciate your comments and the templates. So thank you. And we are now going to hear from Dan Martin, who is the Senior Director of Public Policy at the Mental Health Association of Maryland. Dan, thank you again for participating with us this afternoon. Happy to hear from you.
Yeah, and Commissioner Burein, thank you very much. And thanks to the MIA for putting this together. I'm not going to be long at all, really. I'm just here to kind of support for the MIA's decision to measure reimbursement rates as one of the NQTLs in the compliance reporting tool. You know, as you mentioned, many of the commenters in the November hearing spoke to the need to include reimbursement rates in that compliance tool. And it's unsurprising, you know, given the December 2019 Milliman report that Dr. Harbin and Ms. Middlebrook mentioned that showed that insurance carriers in Maryland pay mental health providers 18% less than other doctors for similar billing codes. And this is, you know, from a consumer perspective, this is a disparity that limits health plan networks and overall access to care. And so again, we are grateful to the MIA for determining that reimbursement rates aren't appropriate NQTL to measure. We support that. And again, I'm not going to go into, we also support with Dr. Harbin and Ms. Middlebrook, the templates that they referenced. Think it's an excellent compliance analysis tool that will return reliable, consistent, responsive and useful data. And so we support the adoption of that template as well. And with that, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Does anybody from the MIA have any questions? Okay, well, Dan, thank you, as always. Very much appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Ellen Weber, who is the Vice President of Health Initiatives at the Legal Action Center. Hey, Ellen, thanks for being with us today. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. And thank you so much, Commissioner Burein, and thank you, excuse me, for the opportunity to testify about, excuse me, reporting of reimbursement rate setting practices as one of the NQTLs that must be covered under the carrier reports. We, of course, agree with your decision to amend the NIAC Market Conduct Tool to include reimbursement rate setting, not only as a matter of state law, but now, as we've all been discussing over these last half hour, as a matter of federal law. Clearly, the Congress since November 20th has really adopted significant new Parity Act compliance review and reporting requirements under Section 203 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act. And from our reading of this, this actually, the standard actually preempts several of the provisions under 15-144, which I'd like to describe very briefly. I also want to address some examples of specific reimbursement rate setting practices that should be analyzed for parity compliance, which we really recommend be actually included in the regulatory standards. I'd like to talk a little bit more, picking up on already what Dr. Harbin and Ms. Middlebrook have said with regard to some of the factors, the processes, the evidentiary standards that are very specific to reimbursement rate setting. And I'm going to provide some examples from some market conduct exams that New Hampshire conducted in this very area to give some very specific examples of what we think needs to be included. And then finally, talk just very briefly about the templates. I really appreciate Ms. Middlebrook going through the detailed template that they have. And obviously, the DOL self-compliance tool template, there are some observations around that that I would like to make specifically because there are clear differences between Medicare and private insurance. And just as a reminder, Medicare is not subject to the Parity Act. And so the rates that are put into place under Medicare have never been analyzed for compliance with the Parity Act. So there may be some very discriminatory practices that have been baked into those standards that we all need to be really conscious and aware of. So the first thing I wanted to talk about very briefly, if I could, is that, as you know, 15-144 gives the MIA discretion as to what additional NQTLs to add on to the NAIC tool. And it also sets out a timeline and a frequency for reporting. Both of those items, in our view, have now been preempted by federal law. Federal law makes it very clear, as do the frequently asked questions that were released on April 2 that we've been speaking about. It makes crystal clear, if you take a look at frequently asked question number eight, all NQTLs must be reviewed and subject to reporting. There is no question, just as there was no question under the self-compliance tool, that a compliance report has to cover all NQTLs. The federal law now is just incontrovertible. And so while it's important to be able to focus on very specific NQTLs, as the GOL has done, it has also made explicitly clear that the carriers must review all. And then the other component of all of this is the fact that, as you know, and as already Dr. Harbin has identified, under federal law, both the federal agencies as well as the state insurance departments are now under this requirement to request at least 20 reports annually from carriers. And that went into effect as of February 10 of this year. So 15-144, which sets up a two-report process, one in March of 2022 and one in March of 2024, those reports are fine, but the MIA must still ask for 20 reports annually in order to comply with federal law. So that is another element that now our state is subject to. So those are really, those are two important items that I wanted to identify because obviously it impacts the process moving forward. So I wanted to address those. Moving on, if I could, to sort of the reimbursement rate setting practices for which carriers should conduct a parity analysis. What I wanted to identify was from both the DOL self-compliance tool, federal parity litigation, as well as market conduct examinations in various states. There is sort of a, you know, a set of reimbursement NQTLs that I think are very important to consider. And again, what our recommendation is, is that these be really set out in the regulatory process so that the carriers are on notice, that there is, you know, there are reimbursement practices that go beyond just how much you pay for in-network services that really must be analyzed for purposes of a complete report. So among those are, obviously, there's the basic reimbursement rate setting practices for network providers. But in our view, there's a process that's the single case agreement process that carriers use when a consumer requests the right to go out of network because the network is inadequate. That's a rate setting process. And so that, and that very well may be different than what a carrier does for an in-network service or for out-of-network services. So that must be analyzed. The second is, again, contained in many of the materials we've already talked about, are the methods for determining unusual, customary and reasonable charges for out-of-network providers, including, as courts have already found, reducing reimbursement rates for mental health and substance use disorder providers by a set percentage based on education or licensure level. The MIA, I know, has been dealing with this in a market conduct, in an order that was issued against United. But that's a very specific NQTL. There are other NQTs, such as restrictions on applicable billing codes. Courts have considered, for example, carrier refusals to reimburse and cover urinalysis testing for diagnostic and treatment purposes for some substance use disorders. The courts are already looking at that reimbursement NQTL. Another one is reimbursement rate adjustment practices in order to address network gaps and incentivize carriers, providers to come into the network. It's another separate NQTL. And finally, something else that is coming up in the case law is carriers refusal to honor reimbursement commitments. That's an NQTL. Because if they're making commitments to reimburse at a certain level, but if carriers aren't doing that, that is a barrier to care. That is a reimbursement practice. So all of those NQTLs need to be assessed and analyzed by the carriers. And those items must be included in the report. And as I mentioned, we really would urge the MIA to go into some level of detail about what types of reimbursement practices they expect the reviewing, to the extent the carriers use those various plan designs. The third thing I wanted to talk about very briefly is, again, this whole, the issue with regard to the factors, the processes, the evidentiary standards that must be analyzed for parity compliance. And Dr. Harbin and Ms. Middlebrook have gone through in a very, you know, important and critical way, identifying just how much the federal government and the federal agencies are now really articulating with great detail what is to be expected. So clearly, they have to identify the factors that are used to determine whether the NQTL will apply. And they have to provide a definition of each of those factors. And they have to identify the evidentiary standards that are used for those factors and any other source of evidence that they rely on to design them. And then they have to conduct the comparative analysis. So what we did was to try to get a better idea of really what some of those factors are. a better idea of really what some of those factors are, and what those processes are, and what some of the evidentiary standards might look like for purposes of reimbursement. We took a look at the New Hampshire market conduct examinations that they conducted and completed as of, I think it was January 2020. And for two of those, they found significant, they, they found violations of, of reimbursement rate-setting practices, or what they at least found was, as Dr. Harbin identified, the carriers could not explain how they got to where they got, right? They, they gave some of the very general information, but never the level of detail that were, that enabled the market conduct examiners to understand and see whether there was compliance or not. They looked, in fact, to see whether there were disparities with regard to a Medicare benchmark, and they found significant disparities in for that, by two carriers. For that reason, they asked for, you know, a clear analysis of, of the factors, evidentiary standards, and to do the comparison, that comparative analysis. And neither Anthem nor Harvard Pilgrim were able to do that. But what that market conduct exam talked about was some of these general factors. And I think these are things that we're going to start seeing when you get your reports. They were things such as relative value units, education level, licensure level, established base plan rates, geographical scarcity, the anticipated need for services, average reimbursement rate statewide, a reimbursement rate that carriers must pay to be competitive with other carriers in the state, and market domination. So those were various factors, those are various evidentiary standards and factors that were being used by carriers to set their reimbursement rates. In addition, there were specific processes that were also identified. And among those processes were things such as the frequency of updating reimbursement rate schedules. One of these carriers in New Hampshire updated the schedule for medical providers on an annual basis. They didn't do the same thing with regard to substance use disorder and mental health providers. So that's a process. Another, another thing that was very important was whether the carriers allowed for negotiation of reimbursement rates. And if so, how did the carrier ensure comparability in that negotiation process? One of the things that we've heard historically in Maryland, and I hope others will, 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 will speak to this, providers will speak to this, in the substance use and mental health context, there is no negotiation. The, the rate is provided by the carrier and the, and in, in, in most situations, the provider is not allowed to negotiate that rate. Now, I don't know whether that happens in the medical context, but I suspect it doesn't. But again, I think some of these other factors influence that. You know, how much power does that particular provider have? How, how is that provider's service as a scarce service? All of those are, are variabilities that, again, have to be on level with medical standards. So that's really very important. Another element that's really important, and the, the self-compliance tool speaks to this, and others do, how much discretion does the carrier have in deviating from its reimbursement framework? And again, just like negotiation, how does that carrier ensure that its, its discretion is, is, is comparable for mental health and substance use services along with medical services? So that is a significant component that results in the disparities that others have already talked about. So those, so, and one other process that became clear was what adjustments are being made for market conditions? Again, how is that defined, and what evidentiary standards are there to ensure comparability? So again, we really recommend, just as others have stated already, that in developing the regulations, in developing the templates, that the MIA identifies sort of the level of detail and documentation of these various, very specific reimbursement factors. In, in, so again, so the carriers are on notice, and that you're getting real data that is going to be of value and, and useful. Just one last point on that, and then I'll finalize with the fourth point very quickly. There are, in the self-compliance tool, a number of factors and evidentiary standards that have been identified. But I think it's really important to understand that those factors and evidentiary standards differ across non-quantitative treatment limitations. These, these factors and processes are ones that, again, based on these market conduct examinations, are very specific to reimbursement, and it should get down to that level of detail. And the final point that I wanted to make was, again, with regard to the templates. As we've talked about it, the Department of Labor self-compliance tool is, is critically important, and there are other templates that are being, being developed right now. One of the things that we wanted to address with regard to the warning signs, outcome analysis, that, that Ms. Middlebrook talked about is, is as we know, the DOL self-compliance tool raises and identifies Medicare as a potential benchmark. One of the other documents, though, that we had presented in our, in our document from the November hearing, was a document that the California Attorney General issued, and has, it is, it is required carriers to report back on. And it does also relate to reimbursement rate setting. And rather than use the benchmark of Medicare, what it asked those carriers to do really was to provide the average contracted reimbursement rates and the average rates offered for office visits and evaluations over a two-year period for designated providers. And the, one of the important things about that list is that, that document, is that it listed out mental health and substance use disorder providers in a much more granulated way, in a much more granular way than what you would get in Medicare. Because Medicare does not cover the full range of mental health and substance use disorder providers, right? It covers physicians, it covers licensed clinical social workers, and it covers psychologists. It does not cover certified counselors, it does not cover, it doesn't cover licensed counselors. And it certainly doesn't cover the various facilities that are providing so many services in, in Maryland. So the California list did that. It attempted to become much more granular and align it with what the service workforce looks like in California. So when, so in, in doing some type of an outcome analysis, we would urge the, the MIA to, to consider that, like, of more granular analysis, and not to rely, quite frankly, on, 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 or to take with a grain of salt, with a huge grain of salt, what some of the limitations will be if we use Medicare as a benchmark. No question about it, the Milliman Report did that and found disparities. Maryland, several years ago, did the same type of thing. We did a benchmark review and found disparities, some along the same lines. But it's important to remember, there are a lot of other providers in Maryland, Medicare is not subject to the Parity Act, facilities and providers are reimbursed differently under Medicare, and all of those different factors need to be considered when we're doing some type of outcome analysis. And then the very last thing, and again, I appreciate you taking, letting me speak for such a long time, there are templates that states are developing that, that the MIA should look at. As we know, Texas, as just in its regular, in its, in its proposed rules, done a lot of work around this. It has created a template that, that is essentially tracking the, the self-compliance tool. Pennsylvania also has a template for NQTLs. And so, again, those are important starting points. But again, there is just, as we all know now from, from the frequently asked questions, there has to be a significant level of detail that is provided in order to have a sufficient report. So thank you very much for giving me the time to, to run through that. And thank you again for all that you're doing to ensure parity compliance in Maryland.
Thanks, Ellen. I, I really appreciate your comments. We are looking at, you know, what Texas has done and what Pennsylvania has done, frankly, what all the states have done. And we are obviously very mindful of the most recent DOL guidance and, and where we see it potentially going. So thank you for that. Does anyone on my team have any questions for Ellen?
I have a question. This is Lisa Hall. Ellen, you referred to a few cases. I would appreciate it if you could forward the case citations. I would like to take a look at those. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to. Thanks, Lisa. I'm gonna, I'm, we'll be submitting some written testimony, and so we'll include all that. Would that be good for you?
That would be perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
And Ellen, so, you know, the wonky little Arissa preemption lawyer that I am, I'm not up to think about what you've said about preemption, but I would be very interested in that analysis, if you want to include that in your remarks as well, or in your, you know, your written submission.
Be happy to.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony very much.
And again, it's, it's preemption to the extent that federal law is more stringent than Maryland law, obviously. And as we've identified, we think there are a few places where, where in fact that has, that has become the case. I didn't think that was going to happen, quite frankly. But, but in fact, I think it has.
Thank you. Okay. Um, next, we'll hear from Matt Celentano. He is the Executive Director of the League of Life and Health Insurers of Maryland. Hey, Matt, nice to see you.
Good to see you too, Commissioner Breen. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity. My name is Matt Celentano, on behalf of the League of Life and Health Insurers of Maryland, which includes Aetna, Care First, Cigna, Kaiser Permanente, and United Healthcare. Once again, thanks again for the opportunity to provide comments on the parity regulations process. First and foremost, before I sort of get to some of the stuff I wanted to say, the prior speaker implied that the Maryland reporting frequency is preempted by federal law. The federal law does not require the carriers provide the analysis to the MIA at all, just that the MIA can ask for it. So therefore, the federal law doesn't preempt the reporting timeline in the state law. Also, unlike what the same prior speaker said, it is not accurate that the MIA is now required to conduct 20 plan reviews a year under the federal law. As you all are aware, state regulators now have a new tool to ensure plans are complying with the parity law. New federal reporting and oversight requirements provide the support, uniformity, expertise that states have been asking for as they evaluate document plan compliance. This new federal tool codifies the analytic framework of the DOL self-compliance tool, which we've been hearing about. This tool, which is recently updated after a comprehensive, broad stakeholder comment process, requires group health plans and health insurers offering group or individual coverage to evaluate compliance of the parity law and to maintain written documentation of the analysis performed to ensure their compliance. So on or after February 10th of this spring, or end of the winter, depending on how you look at it, the health plans will be required to make this compliance documentation available to federal and state regulators upon request. This new law will require regulators to review parity law compliance analysis from at least 20 different plans or issuers every year, and institute a formal process where non-compliance is found, including a corrective action plan or period for plans. The federal regulators must share findings of compliance and non-compliance with states. They can issue an annual, or they will issue an annual report to Congress detailing the results of these reviews, and issue regulatory guidance within 18 months of the law's enactment. They update the compliance program guidance document every two years to include examples of non-compliance. Specific plan requirements included in the evaluation and documentation of the requirement, they have to make available specific plan or coverage terms, factors used to determine the NQTLs, and how they apply to medical or surgical, surgical or mental health and substance use disorder benefits, the evidentiary standards used to evaluate the factors, and any other source or evidence relied upon to design and apply the NQTLs to medical surgical or NHSU benefits. The comparative analysis demonstrating that the processes, strategies, evidentiary standards, and other factors used to apply the NQTL to mental health or substance use disorder benefits as written and in operation are comparable to, and no more stringent than those used to apply to medical surgical benefits. And lastly, specific findings and conclusions by the plan issuer, issuer about whether it or not is in compliance. It is very likely that the DOL is going to release guidance after, after they receive the self-compliance reports. And if the MIA follows this lead on deviation from the compromise in House Bill 455 from 2020, we respectfully request that making the compliance tool to be uniform to ease reporting requirements for carriers. Lastly, as indicated in the announcement-
I'm sorry, Matt, Matt, I, I'm not sure I caught that last sentence. Did you say if the MIA is going to deviate from the compromise?
Correct. And House Bill 455. I think that's what I'm getting to now, in the reimbursement-
So I was gonna ask you, what is deviation from, and what was the compromise?
Well, the compromise was the NAIC tool in the bill that was in the codified language. And the reimbursement rates to us represent a change from that discussion in House Bill 455 in the 2020 session. So if the MIA, from the perspective of the carriers, wishes to gather reimbursement levels from particular companies, we believe this information has to be kept proprietary and confidential within the regulations. It's critical that competitive business practice be kept between individual companies and the MIA. We kindly suggest that the MIA look to the Department of Labor tool for any added reimbursement rate analysis, but obviously not broadly for all the reporting, as Maryland will be using the NAIC, NAIC tool per the uncodified language in House Bill 455. Reimbursement, particularly when rates are negotiated, is a very complex area, and we hope, as usual, the MIA will take their time to understand this complexity, and also appreciate that compliance with the parity law does not mean that all providers are paid to the same rate. If the MIA is gravitating towards the expansion of the NAIC template or the DOL tool, the carriers would be happy to have that conversation. And that's where I wanted to end. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today.
No, Matt, I appreciate that. Obviously, I think we'll have to agree to disagree about, you know, those 13 being the set number. But I do want to hear what, and I appreciate your comments about reimbursement and what that consists of, you know, what, what those comparisons consist of, what that reporting consists of. One of the things I would like you to do and to take back to your members and provide written comments on are the templates that have been provided by Beth Ann Middlebrook and Dr. Henry Harbin, and your views specifically on those templates.
Will do. Happy to do so, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is there any, any questions from anybody else at the MIA? That's great. Thanks. And Matt, if you have, I mean, you know, any specifics or any ideas or, you know, other, what other states have done, or, you know, that, we're very happy to look at those examples as well.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now hear from Lori Doyle, who is the Public Policy Director for the Community Behavioral Health Association of Maryland. Lori, it's nice to see you. How are you?
Always great to see you very well. Thank you. Great to see you, Commissioner, as well. And thank you for your time and that of the MIA team today. Lori Doyle here on behalf of the Community Behavioral Health Association of Maryland. We have 95 member organizations that provide community behavioral health services throughout the state and operate a total of 143 outpatient mental health centers, or OMHCs. OMHCs are licensed and regulated facilities. There are a number of requirements that they have to provide. For instance, they have to have a medical director, they have to have at least two types of licensed clinician, and there's others that, that exist in regulation. And they serve primarily the Medicaid population. But our members are very interested in serving the commercial population as well, because we receive calls from people looking for services, and we'd love to provide those for them, but we do not have contracts with commercial carriers, largely for two reasons. And the same two I've been hearing for the, I hate to say, 30 some years I've been doing this, but it's credentialing and it's rates. So normally, when you think of somatic care, you think of Medicaid as the payer of last resort, which it is, which means that it's also the payer with the least generous reimbursement rates. And in somatic care, that's true. But in behavioral health, it's exactly the opposite. So Medicaid is actually the most generous provider in terms of reimbursement rates, followed by what one, one of our members calls a race to the bottom between Medicare and commercial carriers. Medicare is about, according to our members, about 10% higher than commercial. But Medicare, as Ms. Weber and others brought up, is not necessarily the greatest benchmark. Medicare has had its own issues with behavioral health. It wasn't so many years ago that outpatient co-pays were much higher for behavioral health than for a somatic service. So if you went for a broken leg, you had a 20% co-pay. If you went for depression, you had a 50% co-pay. And that's been eased out over time. But I say that only to make the point that Medicare is not the greatest benchmark for, for comparison purposes. The one exception in terms of our clinic experience is the E&amp;M codes. So in E&amp;M codes, Medicare pays the higher rate. Medicaid pays about 93% of the Medicare rate, and then commercial lags behind that. But commercial always comes in last, no matter which way you cut it. So- So it will be interesting to see that Medicare recently raised their E and M codes again. So we'll see now if that's going to be followed. We know that some money was put in Medicaid to keep it at the 93% level, and we'll see if, if the commercial carriers file a suit. Others have brought up the issue of negotiation of rates, and we, in talking to our members, there's very little of that that goes on unless it's a single case agreement, or if there's a specialty type of service that's very, very difficult to find. There is no negotiation. So I guess I would just close by saying that, you know, we are very highly motivated to work in the commercial market. Yet, if we don't deal with this rate issue, we'll continue to have the same problems we have today with people looking for services and not being able to get them. So I, I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
I thank you for the information, as usual. We always appreciate your perspective. Is there anyone from my team that has any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
I'm sorry. This is Lisa Hall. Ms. Doyle, I do have one question. I'm sorry. Can you just speak to the credentialing issue that you're saying that you're having problems with, please?
Sure. So what we find is that our providers will sometimes have individual practitioners who want to, to participate. They'll, they'll put those individuals in for, through the credentialing process. First off, you know, there's a sense that there's this uniform credentialing process in Maryland, or a uniform credentialing tool. But what we hear from our providers is that's, that's just the beginning. So you fill that out, and then each carrier has additional information that it wants, and that can then extend the process to six months, sometimes even more, to get credentialed if you ever do. So it's a, a time issue, and then even in terms of clinicians being able to get credentialed, where carriers will say they have a sufficient network, but these same providers that we're trying to credential clinicians are getting approached for single case agreements. So we actually have a couple of our members who have initiated a complaint process on that to try to get some clarity on, on how this should work.
So for providers who have been denied entry into the network, are there, are there a standard set or a common set of reasons? You're saying the, 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 the one you just mentioned was that the network's already sufficient?
That's the one I hear most often, that we have plenty we don't need. I, I, in general, and this is truly in general, the carriers seem to be more open to prescribers. So docs or nurse practitioners tend to have an easier time getting into networks where therapists or licensed counselors would not.
And these are, that some of these same providers you're saying are providers who, at the same time, are negotiating single case agreements?
Yes, we've had providers that have said they have tried to credential clinicians, were unable to do so, but then get a call and say, you know, I have this individual that needs to be seen. Can we arrange a single case agreement?
So is there a place where this information is collated, you know, or someone could, you know, provide to us, or individual providers would be willing to share this with us so that we have an understanding of, like, that exact circumstance? You know, here's my letter saying, we're full, we've got you, thank you. And then the letter, you know, then the outreach or the negotiation of the single case agreement, I think that that would be very helpful to us.
I will certainly take that back. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll take it back to the, the members. I know we had submitted stuff. It's been probably a year or two, maybe. It's been a while. Prior to your coming on, that we submitted some information. One of our members-
Here?
Yes, to the MIA, one of our members kept very detailed records of when they would submit a credentialing form, how long it took for, you know, for them to hear back, what was the final outcome. But I will go back and see if our, our members have any more up-to-date information for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, and I'll, I'll look internally. Lisa, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, that's fine. I, this is just, it raises some major flags for the network adequacy issues as well, particularly if there's going to be credentialing hurdles that are being placed in front of providers. So, you know, we're always interested in knowing whether or not providers are being asked to provide additional, you know, documentation. And, and, and also, you know, sometimes people try to apply to become part of a network, but really and truly, it's for the self-insured business, or, and so, you know, the insurer ends up being the TPA instead. So there is, there is a little bit of, you know, investigation sometimes to, to look into some of these issues. But anytime I, I hear that there's a credentialing hurdles when, when the, the law is pretty clear on a credentialing process, I'm a little concerned about that.
So my team may beat me with a stick because I, like, we're doing hearing after hearing after hearing in our listening sessions, et cetera. But, but let me ask you, if we were to kind of fire up a virtual town hall and, you know, ask to listen specifically to, you know, providers on this specific issue, you know, I know that we've had providers, you know, come to speak for our network adequacy issues in some of the listening sessions, but, you know, if we were to, you know, to do that of a, you know, an afternoon into the evening, respectful of people's work time, would that be something that you, Lori, and your constituents would find useful?
I'm sure we would. And, and as I was just mentioning, I know we have two members that started a complaint process. Some of the, the first questions that people ask is, and it was brought up before, will there be retribution if we speak out about these issues? So sometimes they will go through the association rather than come up as individual organizations. But I would, I would love to take that back to the members and throw that out as an idea, and I really appreciate you thinking about that.
No, we're going to do it, and I, I see a comment from Senator Eckert, who we'll invite also to speak as well, right after you and, and before Ms. Mitchell. But to ask, you know, we, we're, we'll do that. I mean, we'll, we'll fire up a town hall. We'll have a virtual session. You know, I, I want to hear what's happening with people. You know, look, I, my baseline is my belief that people want to get it right, and that includes the, the carriers. And so I don't start with the idea that people are trying to not get it right. So, but information is powerful, and it's what you need in order to assure that people can get it right. And, you know, the policymakers, you know, within carriers aren't always on the ground with respect to every single issue. So I think that we're all empowered by soliciting that kind of detailed information of what people are really experiencing, you know, on the ground every day. We want to know that. I want to know it. I think carriers want to know it. And frankly, the policymakers in Annapolis need to know it as they're developing, you know, public policy with things that I may not be able to do something about, but they may want to consider. So I think all of this becomes really important. I'm also interested in whether, what you're experiencing, and you don't have to answer this now, but what the kinds of things that you guys are experiencing are, what the geographic overlay, you know, of that is. Because I would be very interested in those providers who are kind of seeing that seemingly disparate, you know, kind of gee, just said the network was too full, but you're doing the single case agreement, where they're located, because there are areas where, you know, mental health service practitioners are far more sparse than other areas of the state. So I think that geographic overlay is going to be really important as well. And we'll work with you and any other groups to try to make sure that, whether it's one session only or two sessions, we, we make sure that we hear from all regions of the state.
Thank you, Commissioner. That would be wonderful. And we do know that Southern Maryland is a particular area where there seems to be problems that crop up. And, you know, when you were just talking about coming in to try to get information and see if we can't work together, we're even seeing with these initial complaints around credentialing that at least in one case, it seems like the carrier's own credentialing office wasn't necessarily carrying out the, the process the way that it was understood internally to that carrier. So there, you know, I think there can be all kinds of reasons why things happen, and it's just helpful, I think, to be able to talk together. So thank you for that.
Well, you are very welcome. Thank you very much. Did anyone else on my staff have any questions? Okay, well, with that, Senator Eckert, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you did, you know, you meant, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak and to, you know, bring your comments and also your questions.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Breen, and everybody who's on this call today. And I really hadn't planned on speaking, but it's fascinating to me because these are exactly so many of the issues we've experienced through the years. And when you heard from Dan, and then when you heard from Lori, I just wanted to underline what they were saying. And we still experience some of that. This has been a topic of concern, I'll bet you, for the past 15 or 20 years. And when my husband was, went back to obtain his license years ago, he faced the same dilemmas. Now, that's been years ago, but fast forward, the whole issue of retaliation comes up. And as I put in the chat, a lot of times we hear the network is just full. We aren't accepting any other providers. But then when we ask for a list of who are your providers in a given area, we find that there are providers on the list who haven't been practicing for years. So those lists need to be cleaned up, and maybe they have been. I think two years ago, this was a major issue. You know, the pandemic raised other issues. Licensed counselors getting in the mix. I could almost give you agencies where we've met with them as a delegation and repeatedly to identify which insurers were not able to get the credentialing done in a timely fashion. And it's hard when you have a shortage area like the shore has been consistently. When we don't have adequate psychiatrists, we've gone to advanced practice nurse practitioners and others. And I still heard this week on a call that we just don't have adequate resources. So I think if we're going to be truly responsive and truly adopt parity across the board, we need to figure this out. So thank you for the opportunity to raise that. And, and I, and my other question was for Dr. Harbin and the crew. I didn't see any nurse practitioners or nurses in that category. So I'm sure they're there. I just was not familiar with those documents until today. But I want to thank you all for working on this issue. It's so very important as we move forward to get this system much more responsive, because now more than ever, we're seeing a greater need. And I think with the pandemic and a little bit of the resistance that we're getting to the vaccine, we're, we're going to have some issues going forward. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And obviously, we will keep you and other members of the General Assembly, you know, informed, both in terms of, you know, these types of hearings that we're having as a run-up to our regulations. But also, you know, each and every time I get together, you know, with folks and we have one of these hearings, there, there's something additional that we learn and that we know we need to listen more closely to certain folks. So we'll certainly make sure that you're aware of the town hall that we're going to put together specifically.
That would be wonderful. Our Behavioral Health Coalition on the shore would be just thrilled to participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, Ms., so Laura Mitchell, who is a member of the Montgomery County Alcohol and Other Drug Abuse Advisory Council? So Laura, it's nice to see you again. How are you?
Nice to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not speaking on their behalf, though. I did want to make that clear. I am speaking as a member of the public, as a consumer. And I'm going to skip around a little bit because on my notes, some of the points were just made about the provider list being out of, out of date, I'll say. And that is an issue that persists, Senator, that has not been cleaned up, unfortunately. I have been going through that for the last six months, going through the lists with 67 providers listed, but only three actually have anything available. So, and I believe it was 27 of them were in one practice that is now closed and not near me any longer. So, yeah, it's still an issue. But when I call my insurance company today, I'll get the same list of providers and, and claim that that's adequate.
So Laura, one of the things I would very much like you to do is, to the extent that you can share that story with me in writing, in the sense that, can you provide me with a copy of the list and when you got it? Can you provide me with the, the, sort of the, the results, the research that you did with where folks are, who's no longer available, who no longer has appointments? I would very much appreciate that information.
Absolutely. I'm sure I still have that information.
Thank you.
We, we did finally get a provider, connected with a provider week before last. So, but it's been very troublesome. The past year, we've spent trying to find a provider for my grandson. I remember when parity, as Dr. Harden remarked, I remember when it passed and cheering because I'd had so much trouble getting care for my son, and it led down a very dark path of mental health challenges and addiction for a number of years. I've, I've shared that story before, but I, I thought that we wouldn't be in that same place. And here we are with my grandson, who is, we're doing the same thing over again. He can't get services, can't get care, can't get anybody close to us. So one of the things I also wanted to mention was the excessive credentialing requirements. There is a real problem with the credentialing. And one of the things that we encountered was in looking for child psychiatrists and counselors in the credentialing, it takes three times as long, at least, to get credentialed. They have all these additional requirements for background checks and psychological checks of their own, and all these extra things that they have to do that aren't required for pediatricians. They aren't required for nurse practitioners providing somatic help, but they're required for mental health. And that slows down the process tremendously. We had four different psychiatrists within a year because they left the practice for one retired, one moved to different, one had a health issue. But each time, we had months and months of delays. We had to drive to Virginia while it, to see a different practitioner with the same organization, while they found someone here and got them credentialed. And that took a really, really long time because he had to go through all these extra hoops, even though he was coming, the place he was coming from, the organization he was working with prior, he was credentialed with the same insurance companies already, all the same insurance companies. And when he came to Jessa, he had to go through the whole process all over again, and it took months. In that time, my primary care was, was providing the medication for my grandson on a continuing basis, what he was already prescribed. It turned out to not have a great reaction to him. He became suicidal and was hospitalized for three weeks. Would that have happened if he was getting care from a psychiatrist who was more familiar with medications and was better able to manage those medications, recognize the signs? I don't know. But that's what happened, and I have to wonder about that. And that is a, that is a risk we can't take. The, there were some comments about making this process transparent. And I'm really glad that you're including the rate setting as part of the process. And I know that in some places, when I, when you go out to a restaurant, like California, they have a letter grade on the door that says how their cleanliness is rated. There are a lot of consumer products that we use. Well, I would like to see that grading for parity compliance on our insurance plans at open enrollment. When I have to choose between premiums and co-pays and out-of-pockets and all of those things, I should not have to wonder whether or not I'm going to be able to get a visit with an insurer, I mean, with a provider for mental health services if I switch to a different plan that is more economically feasible for me. if I switch to a different plan that is more economically feasible for me. And right now, I don't know. And we didn't change. And we had a significant increase in our costs this year because I was afraid to change. So having that level of transparency and having, letting the consumer know where those, those payers are in compliance and whether they're doing it or not is, I think, critical for the success of getting services. Another thing that I would caution about is some of our providers are now turning to third-party providers. We just did a lot of work with the telehealth bill, making sure that we had access, but also that we had the choice of whether we saw our provider audio-only, audiovisual, or in person. And lo and behold, yesterday, I got this flyer for Teladoc with our employer information and our insurer information and Teladoc's information. And guess what it says? For a general medical visit, you pay forty-seven dollars or less. For a mental health visit, eighty-five dollars or less. For a psychiatrist, a hundred and ninety-eight dollars or less. That's not parity. It's no, nowhere near parity. You know, and I'm, I'm thinking, you're, what does that mean? You're paying them? If I'm only paying forty-seven, are you making up the difference? I, I know from my own research that my primary care physician for a twenty-minute visit gets two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. The chiropractor for a fifteen-minute got a hundred and seventy-seven, but both a psychiatrist and the counselor got seventy-seven dollars for fifty-minute visits.
Is that a commercial plan? Is that a commercial insurance plan?
Yes. Yes, it is, through an employer.
Would you send us that?
I sure would. I have it saved as a file and I will email it to Craig as soon as I'm finished.
Thanks.
It, it is, I tried to get some answers from them about what, where those costs were coming from and how they came up with that. And they just kept saying, well, it depends on your plan. You may end up paying nothing. I may end up paying nothing, or I may end up paying a hundred and ninety dollars for a psychiatrist's visit, which is far more than what I pay now. Right now, you know, it's, it's not that, if I can find one. Another issue that we've recently experienced, which was really, really challenging, was being denied access to an out-of-network provider at the same cost when there was no in-network provider available. I spent the last year calling every week because they've done away with waitlists in a lot of places. I had to call every week a number of different providers and find out if they had an opening that they could see my grandson. Meanwhile, a psychiatrist is saying, if I'm going to continue to treat him, he needs to have a therapist. I'm trying to do my best. And he understood that, but he could have lost that care as well. And all they kept saying was, well, we have this provider that we can offer to you, so we won't cover an out-of-network. Well, they had two providers. One was telehealth only, and the other one was in Columbia, which is forty-five minutes for me on a good day and would mean that he would miss two hours of school minimum each week. And it would be likely the same day, so the same class. So we would write off a class, basically, for the, for the rest of the year. That is troublesome, and I was fighting very hard against that and finally got a yes on a call. I'm hoping that the counselor relationship works out with my grandchild, but I'm, we were able to find somebody. Yeah, I think that that is all the issues that I, I wanted to hit on. But I, I'm very, very, very glad that you're including the reimbursement rates in this because if it's not a viable business plan for providers to offer the services that they do, we just won't have them. And that's what we're seeing now. I'm in Montgomery County. I was on the eastern shore, and we could not find coverage down there for a child. It just wasn't available. So, but even here, I came here and I thought, okay, well, we won't have any issues here. There are lots of providers, and there are. There are tons of them. But they don't participate with insurance either because they couldn't get credentialed or because the reimbursement rates are so low they can't stay in business or because it's just too much of a hassle. It's, it's very inequitable and it needs to change. We don't see too many doctors. There are some specialists, orthopedists and things like that, that don't participate with any insurance at all. But in the mental health and substance use field, it's very prevalent, and there's a reason for that.
Well, Ms. Mitchell, Laura, thank you. You know, as always, we've talked many times, and I, I do very much appreciate your comments and your insights and particularly the way you put a very human face and, you know, the reality of what people deal with day by day. So thank you for sharing your story with us. I really appreciate that. Um, is there anyone on my team who has any questions for Ms. Mitchell? Well, thank you very, very much. And I know that Chris Hathaway, who's with AHP, has asked to speak. I have heard from everybody that had signed up in advance. And Chris, thank you for jumping in. Very happy to hear what you guys have to say.
Good afternoon, and I apologize. I'm sharing an office today per COVID. And just wanted to take a real quick minute just to highlight, I work with America's Health Insurance Plans, Chris Hathaway, from a national perspective. And I think what we try to do is really kind of take a step back and see what the data tells us and try to figure out, I mean, human stories are absolutely critical and crucial to know about and to utilize for steps ahead. But I think looking at it from a holistic approach, we want to see what the data tells us. And so I think where, just as kind of a notation, is there is a lot of talk about how far we need to go. But I think the issue is, is how far we are today because of changes just within the last year. So we have the NEIC tool. We just started reporting to that within the last year. We don't, I don't, I think this year's the first year we're getting the data out from that. So I think taking a pause and seeing what that tells us. The DOL new reporting issues, they're all coming out. That will be telling us quite a bit to come out and learn all about. So I think it's just, I, I don't disagree that there's been some question there, but I think just within the last two years, there's been enormous strides to get to learn about the data. And I just say, before we go on and add another layer of, of reporting requirements, let's see where we are. Let's see what we've got first and then move forward and have those conversations. I think in, in the perspective of payments, the commissioner absolutely has the power to look at those during market conduct exams. That's what some of the other states have done. This week, we encourage the conversation to continue to do is, is when you have the ability to have those conversations with plan in that kind of setting. Some of these very stringent reporting requirements that we see being pressed here and in Texas go way beyond where we can, they're stringent formulas, they're very, not a lot of flexibility compared to what our plans usually report on. And so we've got this new NEIC tool, the new DOL tools. We're just saying if we could, let's see how this comes out. Let's continue with, with the market conduct as you, as you normally do. And then, and then maybe in a year or two, let's come back and take a look and see if these are necessary and if these will be helpful or not. So just a, just a thought there. Thank you very much for your time.
No, I appreciate that. And let's separate the apple from the orange, right? So with respect to the apple, you know, our primary purpose here today is really to talk about the development of our regulations and the fulfillment of our statutory obligation to require reports and to have a uniform methodology and reporting sort of approach and template. And then the, the orange, I say apple, yeah. So then the orange is that in the course of these hearings, I will hear things and learn things that don't go necessarily to this task, but that is the regulator of insurance in the state I need to be aware of. And so, you know, hence the need sometimes for a town hall or, or something else. So just want to make sure that you understand that, you know, sometimes I, I go off on a tangent because I see something like Talisa Hall's point that touches another one of our regulatory functions. And I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So you mentioned, am I hearing you that you don't think that the MIA should add reimbursement at this time?
I, I, yes, I, I think to, I, I don't want to say ever because I, I think where we always like to say is base things on data, base things on statute that we've got, that we have. And we just, within the last two years, there's been just a whole new world of reporting within the mental health. Now, obviously, we've always had carrier restrictions and we always want to adhere to those to the best of our ability. But there's been some gray area in the NQTL space. I think we all agree to that. I know our advocate friends and colleagues have really been pressing for a stepwise analysis, I believe is what. And, and that is where the DOL went. So it is going to be a very, much more in-depth look than it has been in the past. So I, I think from that perspective, just maybe, you know, trying to see what was, is coming out from the NEIC data, coming out from the DOL data, and, and pressing to that point and then seeing, okay, do we need to take that next step into getting the reimbursement rates as well? When you have authority to do that currently under the market conduct.
But you would agree that the way the federal law is right now today with regard to the self-compliance tool right now, there is an obligation in carriers to be ready to report to the federal government on request with regard to reimbursement parity.
Yes, I don't disagree. But I think where we get, when I start to look at some of the templates that we were, that they were showing on the screen earlier, that's where, you know, we've seen another state that hasn't been similar but slightly different. That's where I started to get, okay, guys, we're, you know, when I look at it, when I put the NEIC hat on, it's, let's try to make sure as we move forward on additional reporting that these are things that we have talked out through the NEIC process, which they did to get to the NEIC tool, so that we're all dealing with the same reporting requirements that we're not now going to have states coming out with fifty different versions with the same template, but maybe with five different questions in each and every different state. So I kind of look at it from that perspective. From, you know, at the NEIC, they had this big discussion about this new mental health reporting tool, which is now out about two years, I believe. And we had commissioners at the table. We had advocates at the table. We had employers. We had carriers. So everyone is at the table, and that's kind of where they got to. And did everyone love it? No. But that's kind of what you want. You want a product that not everyone is happy with. We thought it was too much. Consumers thought it was too little. And so you get to that, that point of where you can get some sort of middle ground. And this, to me, is, is trying to then go back and they didn't, you know, that advocates are now pushing for more. And I get that they want that information. But at the same point, this is kind of, we're trying to stay aligned within our states and see what the data comes out, see what that reporting tool tells us, and then go back and discuss, okay, is there changes needed? But doing it through the NEIC, not individual states, because that just makes it a really difficult and costly as we move forward.
I, I appreciate the regional and national approach. I guess what I would say is that regardless of what the NEIC or any state does, the Department of Labor has separately identified a reporting requirement or being available, having information available and a self-compliance tool. So regardless of what the NEIC put in or left out, carriers, at least as of February, have to be ready to report on, you know, reimbursement per the self-compliance tool. So that actually shouldn't be an additional burden on carriers if they are going to be compliant with the federal law, which is why I wanted, invited Matt to comment specifically on the additional templates, which are beyond the self-compliance tool. And I am happy to hear from you on that as well. Because I, I would think that if you have to be compliant with DOL and the self-compliance tool, that would be a, a baseline for looking at reimbursement parity because technically, you already have to have that.
No, absolutely agree. I think it's just the basis of how you have to report it and in what format and formulas and getting, you know, if it's when rubber, you know, when the tire meets the road or rubber hits the road, it's what does that particular tool look like and what does that require? And let's try to stay united into one, not fifty different versions that are the same thing, get to the same thing but are slightly off here and there.
All right. Well, thank you for those comments. I appreciate that. Anybody from my team have questions, Ms. Hathaway? Okay. Well, with that, I can see Senator Augustine. Thank you for joining us today. Do you have comments to share with us? We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. And I do, Commissioner Breen, I just want to start by saying thank you for hosting this public hearing. And as the legislative sponsor of this legislation, I'm very pleased with the progress that you're making on this and that you're, as you always do, listen so intently to these stories of a lack of compliance with the Parity Act. And so I'm just really grateful that you are continuing to go down this path. I'm also just, from a legislative intent standpoint, very supportive of what you're doing here with regard to bringing reimbursement in. I think that that's, it makes all the sense in the world. I mean, we're trying our best to ensure compliance with the federal law. And as you've mentioned in this, in this discussion, I'm just in agreement with you. It's not a burden, but it is a strong indicator. And so I, I just really appreciate what you, and it's an important element. I just really appreciate the work that you and your team are continuing to do in this regard. And I'm, I'm watching, I'm listening, paying attention. And if there are needs for statutory changes, I'll be right there to help and support you on this as we've worked together in the past. So just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. We appreciate the support and the guidance. And, you know, part of what we want to do in this process and in the town hall halls and our listening sessions to come is also to create a body of information. You know, the MI, so that you as policymakers, you and Senator Eckert and others, you know, really can understand, you know, what's happening, you know, and, and act accordingly. So thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I heard you say that, and I was loving hearing that and really grateful to hear it. And, you know, looking forward to, to getting that information that comes out of that, without a doubt. So just thank you so very much.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who is on the line who would like to be heard today? Don't be shy. You know, we really do want to hear from everybody who has something to say. So Craig, have you heard from anybody else?
No, I'm not seeing anyone else.
Well, with that, I think we'll close today out. Thank you so much. Is there anybody from my team who has anything that they would like to say? Erica or David or Lisa, Mary?
This is Erica. I just want to comment. We've heard a lot today regarding the templates and the tools for the data collection side and more information will follow. We'll certainly seek comments regarding various tools that have been recommended today as well as tools that are already out there that are being used by other states, such as Texas and such as Pennsylvania. So as we sort of adopt tools to collect this information, we can be informed by the carrier experience in terms of what's happening in other states. We do hear and frankly echo some of the uniformity concerns. But obviously, we're mindful with ensuring that the information we give back is robust and complete. So that's the only comment. Thank you, Commissioner.
No, thank you, Erica. Very, very well stated. It is very much our desire to make sure that we consider all the information and all the experience. So, you know, hence the invitation to AHP and to the league to provide comment on really any of the templates that have been discussed today. And if there are practical barriers or considerations or things that we ought to be taking into consideration as we develop and put into regulation various tools, we want to hear it. Now, our goal overall is to do something that is efficient and useful. Because at the end of the day, what is absolutely necessary is that we meet the standards of the federal and the state law. That is what is important. And what we want to do is have a set of reports that get us there in a way that is the least painful, but also provides us with the data that we actually need. So that is our common goal. And if there's information that carriers want to provide that, that will help us in that goal, we absolutely want to hear it. So I want to thank everybody. Anybody else on my team that wanted to speak? Okay. Well, with that, thank you so much, everybody who participated today. As usual, it's extremely, extremely helpful and educational. And we will take all this information. We will take the written comments that people provide. We will then begin to actually work on the regulations and the tools. And um the next um iteration, if you will, will be a, a, a publication of, at a minimum, a, a draft set of uh standards, perhaps the full regulations, but certainly the tools that we're looking at using. And then we will have, of course, a, a public hearing to talk about that as well. So thank you today and that will conclude today's hearing. Thanks, Craig.